For November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen is now called to order. At six oh five P M. Miss Bynum with your certified form, please.
Councilmember Roland.
Present.
Councilmember Randa. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
Present. Thank you, ma'am. And if Ms. Ray would lead us in a quick invocation and prayers, let's move.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for everyone that is here and everyone that had the desire to be here and everyone who is not here. Please have everyone make it home safe tonight and have this meeting go with decency in an order. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Now the prayers of the evening. Our prayers of the evening to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice or wrong. Our next item is public comments. And first we have Jose Gonzalez. So you can stand on the podium and share with us.
Well, sir. The reason we are here is because we tried to find a, the, to pull a try now and our property is possible to do a mobile home and our property.
You mean a manufactured home?
Yeah, manufactured.
That's a mobile home to you. Go ahead.
This is something we need.
Yeah, we can't comment now, so we'll get back to the something. Thank you. June Amaro. Mayra Amaro.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we own a property off of Rosewood and we are wanting to possibly put in a mobile home, but we find it very, not a mobile home, a manufactured home. And we are finding it very difficult. And there's a lot of restrictions and I know there's a lot of process that, you know, of grandfathering in from a long time ago. But as I see it, we don't have the means to build a house. And the area is not what you would think would be a two-story, five-bedroom kind of neighborhood. You know, I've seen a lot of animals and a lot of stuff that I would think it would be possible for us coming in and maybe being able to do that, but we were told no. So our question is, why? And, and if y'all could consider allowing us, you know, we really can't afford to build a house from the ground up. And I, that's why we purchased that property, not knowing that we weren't allowed to. But, thank you.
Ron Everett.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor City Council. When I, I wanted to get some, a little bit, a bit more clarification on the, I guess, on the city attorney and relate to the new law in terms of items on the agenda. The citizens' comments. I said, I know there's a new law relates citizens' comments that was coming in many, only, only item, each item. And it's a, I'm not quite clear on the timeframe. I think I would appreciate if you all would allow the city attorney to explain it to the audience. So that we would know what we can come in on and what we can, because I think that's a concern that take a while to have, you know, we just don't quite understand. The other is, I would ask about the order of the agenda. I notice that the agenda is, is in the order that I'm familiar with. And sometimes I notice that the agenda is confused. And I'm sure that there's a reason for it. I don't know why, but it seems to be in order tonight. I wish it would stay like this. Because it's, it's pretty fairly strong. So I commend you. You will put together some of the items. I think you could have done a little bit more, looking more explanation as to the single line items that would also help us to understand. Thank you.
Charles Brown.
Yeah, I just wanted to address if a person has a property and he want to bring in a manufactured home. I don't see any problem with it as long as it's upgraded. And if it's your property.
Karen Hardaway through this.
Once again, I'd like to address City Council. I'm speaking on Richards Road. I am against allowing a variance, allowing multi-use of the property. It is zoned as single residence for single-family homes. I would appreciate it if you all would vote in favor of those that have lived there for a very long time. In addition, I know that the zoning map is not up here in reference to university. I am requesting that you all look back into that and make sure that those homes that are listed as single-family homes remain as single-family homes and not turned into commercial. I would also like to say that the zoning and planning committee did give you all their advice in reference to the new building that is being requested on Richards Road, and they disapproved of it as well. Thank you.
Shereen Hughes-Simpson.
I'm sorry. Evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Shereen Hughes-Simpson and recently came into a property here on University Drive due to the passing of my father in two thousand seventeen. My mother and my father lived here since the mid-fifties. I was born and raised here in Prairie View and left Prairie when I went off to college. However, now that my father has passed, my brother now own the property. And we are just seeking clarification of what that property on University Drive is going to be. Our address is changed. We're now in Hempstead. Our house number changed. I've heard different things. And not knowing the, what's happened in this community since I have not lived here since I was eighteen, clarification on whether or not this property will remain residential or will be deemed commercial. So that we would know how to proceed with maintaining the property that our parents left. Thank you.
Chair Hardaway.
Good afternoon, Mayor Allen, City Council. I'm hoping though on apartments on Richard Road and also if University Street remains a homeowner as it is.
Ashley Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all are doing well. Happy early Thanksgiving to everyone. I just wanted to bring a few things to you all's attention this evening. Because I'm all about, I'm all about growth and I feel that there are some areas of improvement needed. So on the agenda, of course, there's a thirty-day written report for Panther Hill Apartments, the gates at Prairie View and the other development as well. So as we know, this report was supposed to happen within thirty days. It's now been over thirty days, way past thirty days. So I'm asking that in the future council considers what they need to do differently in the future when they need these kind of reports. Because it shouldn't take another city council member to take over these actions. It should be a collective thing that happens quickly. And so it's, it's also, it appears to be a disservice to the community as well when these things are said to be done in a certain amount of time and they're not. So I feel as though that's, that's a great improvement that needs to happen. Also, I know that you all have on the agenda improvements to be made to other living areas, Shady Oaks and Prime Meadows and also you have health and safety concerns on there as well. So I'm going to, when Easy mentioned last meeting, he mentioned that the city needs a strategic plan. That comes into hand because you all need to, you know, not just point out certain things. But I feel as though since the community is growing, you need to look at the entire community and see what is needed in each area. And also I put on my comment card that I would like to speak during item number twelve.
George Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. Along with some of the other folks that were in here, ask that you both know to the rezoning of the properties on Richards Road. And there are two properties, I believe, that's on the agendas, item sixteen and item eighteen. I think that there are times when we don't listen to the folks who are lifelong residents of this community. You have a lot of people that live on, on Richards Road who's been there, you know, almost since Richards Road was named Richards Road. Those name, you know, the family members that are in here. And a lot of those folks, the Tompkins, the Richards, the Hardaways, the Matthews, they certainly don't want apartments in that area. And again, there are times when, and I've heard this at the last meeting where comparisons to Cypress and the growth of Cypress and business is going to Cypress. If you want Prairie View to grow at a commet, you know, with Cypress, you have to look at it long, long term to make sure that the city grows like Cypress. And that's not by putting apartments everywhere like a jigsaw puzzle, just wherever it fits. You put it in a bedroom community, it's R one, let it remain R one. Now, I'm sure the folks who purchase this property, they knew, you know, very well, you know, very well that it was R one. Understand that they had their opportunities to petition to the zoning commission. My understanding is, I was at the last meeting, the zoning commission said no. No to the, to the rezoning. And I ask that you look at the same. Again, keep in, keep in mind, students, and I understand a lot of the things that we vote on are with the students in mind, but you got a lot of lifelong residents. Students come and go. But you have a lot, you have a lot of residents here who remain in Prairie View. And for those folks, you should give them the ultimate consideration as well. Thank you.
Georgia Jackson.
Hello, everyone. To the mayor, City Council. I am here to support the Williams family. Couple of years ago, I was here at a meeting for another young lady that got approved on Sharon Street for a manufactured home. And since that time when she was approved, I did ask questions about that. Would there be other people, would other people be able to bring a manufactured home into that area? And there was another lady here, Mrs. Williams, she also owned property there. And she was also told that she could bring prop, that she could bring a manufactured home there. Because now it has been approved by City Council that they can do that. Now we're running into a problem. Now, the Williams family, this young man grew up in Prairie View. He lived in that, that area, that spot. It was an old single home that was there years ago. So my understanding is he want to put one there now. And since there was one there previously, it should be grandfathered in. And it is a newer model. It's not old, it's not shabby, it's not run down. And I think that you all need to consider that and approve him on having his manufactured home there. Because a couple of years ago, you all did approve for Ms. McCarty to have her home put on Sharon Street. Thank you.
Josephine Kenny.
I made a file. I attached one up. Well, we did put our mobile home on Ezekiel Smith Street. And now I just want to get to know if we can get our permit so we can get water. Like Georgia said, we've been there for years. I grew up on Fernwood Street since I was a little girl. We left, like, maybe eight years and we're coming back. Because we want to come back home.
Donald Williams.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I lived in Rosewood, Little Green, Tredaw, so I can say, I'm a little aware of the state of Texas. Third brother, his mom come back home, so I want to.
Before you sound clear, this is. Charlie Michelle Junior. Peter Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
It's so wonderful to be here and see all these beautiful faces. Boy, I haven't seen this place this full since I've been coming. I thank God for that. I have, to speak on number twenty-four, look for general comments. I'll read this for the record. I'm asking for an open records request. And the description of the information I'm asking for is, please provide copies of documents that show any and all legal expenses the city has incurred over the past twenty-four months that pertain in any way to Panther Hill Apartments and/or its affiliates. And I have my address, contact information, and I'm going to put this in the hand of the city secretary at this time. Thank you.
Item twenty-four.
The other one is item twenty-three.
Item one, discuss and take action on approval of City Council meeting minutes dated November eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Your council's pleads. It's been talked to you in the second that the immediate minutes for November eleventh, two thousand nineteen be approved. You heard the motion, ready for the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. The polls have the same right, that the record shows unanimous. Item two, Roberts rule of order. Just with some misconception for the benefit of all of us, I just want to share this. It's a fairly common misconception that after debate is continued for some time, if any member shouts out question or calls a question, debate must immediately cease and the chair must put the pending question to a vote. This is simply not the case. Any member who wishes to force an end to debate must first obtain the floor by being duly recognized to speak by the chair and must then move the previous question. Such a motion must be seconded and then adopted by two-thirds vote or by unanimous consent. It is not in order to interrupt a speaker with cries of question or call the question, and even if no one is speaking, it is still necessary to seek recognition. Item three, back to room. Want you all come forward. This is a, we have some guests from the country of Vietnam and they are looking to do a potential manufacturing and growing with greenhouses in the city of Prairie View. Do you know how to, or you already?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Aruna Virdsuri. I'm a professor of agriculture and research scientist leader in Prairie View College of Agriculture. And about eighteen months ago, I was discussing with Mayor Allen regarding a potential agriculture industry we can bring to Prairie View to grow high-quality palanopsis orchid. This industry can open a lot of job opportunities and opportunities for the university students to study the floriculture in their curriculum and have their own, you know, avenues in floriculture industry. So I will pass my colleague Kathy to tell about their operation and what they are planning here. So Kathy, you can continue.
Yes. Hello, my name is Kathy. I'm from Vietnam, Ho Chi Minh City. And as Aruna has introduced, that we are growing orchids in greenhouses and distribute for Vietnam local market. And that photo is the palanopsis. And I will do some information about that one. So here I have some general information about the global business of flowers, flowers in general, not only orchids. And as you can see, Asia and some country plays about ninety percent of the global market. Oops, I'm sorry. And the number is increasing year by year. And for orchids, the market is growing because of the consumer value is, and quality of, and the standard of life is growing. So it's a very potential for all the global markets. And as you can see, the Thailand is exporting a lot to the world. And Taiwan, Thailand, and U S play the fourth position importing from that, those countries. And among the floral markets, orchids play about ten percent of the whole market share. And Benroviom, about eighty percent, and palanopsis, which we are growing and distributing, play about fifteen percent. And this is the orchid market outlook. And here's are the factors that affect the, how we grow the orchids and how we can distribute. As you can see, there are a few factors and we keep on, are going to analyze those factor in Texas, oh, sorry, in this city. So whether we can build a greenhouse in and develop here and this trip, we are going to have those information. And this is a sample that Taiwan, we want to show Taiwan because we have the technique from Taiwan. Taiwan is the leading country growing palanopsis. And we have learned from Taiwan to get the technology. And we are confident that we can master it and build it here in the city. And this is our team in Vietnam. Basically, we are a family company and we have run this business for more than seventy-five years. So we are kind of know how to do the business and we have some research here. This has some information about us. And these are some photos about our greenhouse and tissue control. We have some partners from Taiwan and Japan. And here we have Mr. Aruna from the university. We have some analysis about Prairie View. And we think that it's quite suitable for this kind of product. About natural conditions. And the climate chart. So why, why here and not other area? Because we have some numbers that we think that we can bring the, our business, our greenhouse here that we can reduce the cost of importing from other country like Taiwan or Thailand. So we can build here and suffer up everything. We can do tissue control and then we have young plants and we grooming so that we can distribute to you, the consumer, with the most reasonable price of the beautiful plants. And those are the points that we think that is very potential market for us. About our distribution, we have wholesale and decoration flowers. We put and we arrange for our hotel. We put and rearrange for hotels, as a gift, and for banks and other big area, put in the hole for decoration. Yes, these are some of our products, final products, as arrangement flower. And the benefits again, when we build the greenhouses and distribute here, that we will create jobs for the locals, and we will cooperate with the university to do the research and studying and new academic programs. And thank you for your listening.
Hit the lights in the back, please. Thank you. Item four, Flowcams. Yes. Dr. Aruna, and Captain Skatton? Councilman has a question. Want to step back up real quick?
Get right there. So, great, great opportunity. So, one, you're talking about this currently is going on in Vietnam. And you're a professor here at Prairie View, and so you're talking about getting to horticultural.
Yes.
So, creating a greenhouse on campus in the city?
The city.
The city. They're looking at some of the potential available projects, things like that. What is the amount of space that you're looking for?
We were thinking about ten to fifteen acres.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Item four, Flowcam, eighty million dollar expansion. Contact the inspectors meeting regarding expansion. Again, to keep the council and the residents aware, we had contractors inspectors meeting with Flowcam Corporation. This is doing an eighty million dollar expansion just across the railroad tracks from Business Two-Ninety and James Hughes Parkway. And Ms. Rogers, because you've been doing some of the inspecting, working with me, if you share what you could just touch on whatever you'd like to regarding the Flowcam expansion?
We've got three phases out there.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me share for some who don't have it from you or met you.
I'm Donell Rogers. I'm with Yorl Veritas. We do the inspections for the city of Prairie View. We do inspections for a lot of cities, but we're assigned to Prairie View and we're part-time building official for the city of Prairie View. There is three phases going out and out there. We've got the warehouse project, we've got the tank farm project, and we've got the Mark II expansion, which the latest one we've met on this Mark II expansion, met with the engineers and the superintendents on site. They're trying to...